Start with a pledge and prayers, if you'd please stand with us. I'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Davis, will you give your prayer?
Lord, we thank you, Lord, for another day of life. This morning, we're reminded that things can change with one phone call. Lord, this morning, our hearts go out to Kathy and her recovery. We pray for divine healing in her body. Pray for her family by her side. And God, Lord, that you would bring this miracle in her life and in their lives. We pray, Lord, that you would help us to be supportive in prayer and in deed. And God, that we would see her, one day, rise out of her bed and be well again. We pray that you would be with us today. Lord, that we would be humbled by the fact that we are just mere clay or dust. And, Lord, anything can change in a moment's notice. And we pray, God, that you'd help us today to be wise, to do the work of the county, the people of this wonderful county. And we just thank you for your blessings today. We're reminded of your blessings, the blessings of health and family. And we ask it all in the name of Jesus, and everybody said.
Thank you for that. All right, good morning. It is May eighth. We'll jump in with the approval of the meeting minutes for May first.
I would make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from May the first.
I will vacate the chair and second.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
Did we, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt so soon. I know we signed multiple minutes. Was that?
Just correction.
It was correction.
Yeah.
Okay, I, okay. I just wanted to make sure, sorry. Okay.
In the matter of requests for appropriation of funds.
Any comments or questions on appropriations? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
In the matter of requests for appropriation transfer of funds.
Any comments or questions on item three? Hearing none.
Motion approved.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye. That's all right. You're doing great.
You're doing great. Katie's new, so everybody knows. Kate, Kate's been with us for several weeks now, and she is in the hot seat today. She's gonna be doing meetings for a few weeks here upcoming, so we're getting her, get her grounded and get her going here. So she's doing a great job this morning.
Yeah, so don't mess up, Katie.
Gosh, okay.
In the matter of approving payment of the regular schedule of accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and then announce certificates for the total of six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eighty-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
All right. Any questions on item four? Hearing none.
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
In the matter of accepting miscellaneous reports.
I do want to point out, we do have a miscellaneous report from Sauter County work release. Quite a bit of probation hours worked cleaning up the streets. I know they worked on Fort Hill, US twenty-three, fifty-two, State Route three thirty-five. Four hundred and ninety-four hours that they've utilized folks on work release to help clean up our roads. So I appreciate all their hard work. Any comments or questions?
I appreciate the work they're doing. I get this question every once in a while, sometimes remarks on social media about why, why people aren't being made to clean up trash and to help pay off their fines and stuff like that. Well, they are.
They are.
So, just so everybody knows, that is happening, and our work release team does that. And appreciate the judge's cooperation in that as well, because it does take common police court permission to temporary release so we can go out and clean up trash and remove debris and stuff like that. So we appreciate their work. That's it.
All right. That I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
In the matter of request to attend meetings.
Any comments or questions, item six? Hearing none.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
In the matter of communication from Portsmouth Municipal Court regarding electronic monitoring slash house arrest invoice March twenty-twenty-five.
All right, this is dated April twenty-nine, twenty-five from Casey Boone, clerk of court, attached electronic house monitoring invoices for March of twenty-five. The amount is nine thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents, a total of six hundred and sixty-five days at fourteen dollars and fifty cents per day. Second month in a row, we're seeing zero dollars in program paid by the defendants, so I would encourage the municipal courts to please work on that, leaving a total of nine thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents owed by the county. Any comments or questions?
I would echo your comments, and I will make a motion to approve.
A second.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
In the matter of change orders for Oddfellows Building Roof Repairs and Replacement with C T B Incorporated regarding ARPA.
All right, we have some change orders. Been working on a roof project over at the Fifth and Court Building. This is the building where O S U Extension is in, where Economic Development, some roof issues, the Oddfellows building. Our engineer states that change order number one, the cost of the overlay of the roof, estimated five thousand, one hundred square feet, is broken down in the document. Of course, all the plywood, lift rentals, getting down to, this does not include any demo of the replacement of the roof. The breakdown for change order number one is twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars and six cents. And then also, we have change order number two, due to the lack of structural support of the existing overhang on the perimeter of the roof in the building. There's some structural issues, some metal soffit gutter. It's been covered by plywood previously, so we need to fix kind of the previous fixes that were done. We're proposing, based on the revised sketch by the architect, with the understanding that there may be additional support needed in that area, plus that they're going to be forty-eight feet off the ground. The breakdown for the total of change order number two is forty-five thousand, five hundred and four dollars and nineteen cents. Any comments or questions?
Yes, I would add to this, and just so everybody knows, the first changeover in regards, well, I guess we're, yeah, in regards to the roof itself, was none. We included that in the original allocation, which is ARPA-related rescue plan money. And so that was grant dollars that was allocated toward this project. The second change order was one that was not none, and that is the soffit. And basically what happened when they went to go start tearing things off, they found out that the soffit, at least on the south side, is definitely gone, basically rotted. It's a, it's a, it's an old building, and the soffit was very soft, no pun intended, soft, it's soft, in places. So we had, we had two options. One, roof over it and hope for the day, and pass the problem on to another board of commissioners, and, which would eventually materialize at some day, or fix it and have it for generations. So I, we haven't voted yet, but I think the feeling is, is that we need to fix this and fix it right so we're high and dry on that building for several decades. And so with that in mind, and we did briefly discuss this, the, the overage on what ARPA will pay and what we need to pay in addition to was seventeen thousand.
And some change.
Change. So we will have to look to where we will get that seventeen thousand. Off the top of my head, the answer was general fund, but we have not figured that out yet, exactly where we'll get that from. But the, the good news is, and that's never a good, that's never a good thing. We don't like to dip into the general fund for this kind of thing. But the good news is, is that we will basically be able to do this project for seventeen thousand and change for a new roof. So, because the rest of the money was grant money. I know that's a broad way to look at it, but it is basically what we're gonna be looking at. So barring any more change orders, we don't know of any right now that will come, but wanted to just clarify that for the people, that it looks like we are gonna have to do that. We'll dig and scrape and find seventeen grand somewhere. Hopefully, it's not the general fund, but I just wanted to clarify what that, what that all meant.
See, thank you for that clarification. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve.
And I will second.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye.
In the matter of resolution proclaiming May twenty-twenty-five as Older Americans Month in Sauter County, Ohio.
We have a lot of people in the room specifically for this resolution, and we welcome all of you. Jamie, I believe that you would like to speak.
Where's the old people?
Oh, yeah.
You didn't have to raise your hand. You did not have to do that. I was like, where were they?
I'm not, I'm not touching that.
Oh, it's not old, it's older.
Touching that at all.
Hey, I didn't, you gotta, it's all in how you act, okay?
It's all relative, right? So Jamie, if you'd like to, please go to the podium and kind of speak about the proclamation. While you're going there, I want to, you know, this is the space I work in outside of a commissioner. I've been in the long-term care world for a while, and then now in hospice, and a lot of the services you guys provide are critical for our elderly. You know, I was at the convention this week for Healthcare Association. It's not lost on me that in our profession, a lot of the times, we are the last compassionate hand, the last warm smile, the last sense of humanity, unfortunately, that some of our elders ever experience. And it's through our programs and it's through our staff that are providing this care and service. So thank you all. I know you all touched the elder population in multiple ways. So thank you for what you guys are doing and taking care of our valuable population, so. Jamie?
Thank you. And we are very appreciative of the support and that we're seeing that you have, Commissioner, with, with our, the work that we do. So May is Older Americans Month, and we do have our proclamations there. This year's theme is flip the script on aging. And, you know, I really think, you know, Commissioner Davis, she said it's really depends on how you act. And I think that we're seeing that more and more. High Department of Aging recently released some numbers, and I believe they projected that in twenty-thirty, one out of four Ohioans will be something along those lines, over the age of sixty. So, you know, healthcare's coming a long way, and so we're living a long longer. And it very much age is a number, but the one thing that we all have in common is upraging. So I think flipping the script, it's, it's a much needed emphasis. So before you, you have our packets. We always just like to share some information about your agency. Our twenty-twenty-four annual report is in there. And on the right side of your packet, I believe, is information specific to Sauter County. So in twenty-twenty-four, that your agency on aging helped to serve one thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight consumers within the county. You know, that's, that's a lot of touches, that's a lot of intervention there. I know before the meeting started, we were speaking with Renee and with Angie and talking about nutrition services and home delivery meals. Unfortunately, even with all of the great work that they're doing and their efforts to reduce the waiting lists, we just don't have enough resources to go around. So right now, in our ten counties, that's why seven covers, we have over eight hundred people on waiting lists for meals. So, and I think it's important, I mean, everyone, you shouldn't have to be concerned about where you're gonna get your next top meal. So that's, that's point number one. Nutrition is very key to aging and to health, point number two. And number three, a lot of times when people are getting home-delivered meals, that is a set of eyes on someone that maybe doesn't have a set of eyes on them. They show up the door and they're looking like maybe they've had a fall or something like that. That's a set of eyes on an individual that maybe has no other real contact for us to be able to kind of step in and get some referrals and, and get some intervention set up. So I would just say, right now, on the state and federal levels, we are really battling for funding. You know, and this is not something that's newer and common for a lot of areas right now. But the Older Americans Act has not been reauthorized to date, so that's very concerning on the federal level, because a lot of that money we are able to use to match for nutrition, for transportation, for legal services, that sort of thing. So we, as a community partner, are very committed to advocacy. Jenny is constantly in contact with Senator Husted and Senator Moreno's office. We've been to D.C., working with Congressman Taylor, doing what we can at the federal level, and then also at the state level. So we're advocating, like we spoke about, for the budget line for the senior services, the block grant line item, to get some more money allotted there as well for the state budgets. So, and these are all non-Medicaid dollars. So, you know, there's a lot of conversation about Medicaid and production of Medicaid and that sort of thing. So I think we can all agree that keeping individuals in their home, one is where they want to be. Two, it's economically a good option to keep them in their home when you look at the cost of long-term care and that sort of thing. So right now, like I said, we have some template letters, and it is really our time to try to encourage as many folks as possible to reach out to their elected officials, to let them know that we need that Older Americans Act reauthorized. We need that funding, and we need to, to continue to do the work that we're doing to serve the, the older population in our area. So if you are, would be willing, then we can maybe send that template to you or any kind of encouragement you can give throughout the county to be able to have them, you know, have the, the residents of our county to send communication to their elected officials right now. Now is the time, we would be appreciative of that.
Sure. If you would send your, your letter to us, I know just last week, we sent support letters on the behalf of community action. And I know there's a lot of overlap in terms of services and joint populations you serve, so, yeah, please send that over to us. It's a vital, it's a vital service you guys provide to our elderly population, so.
Thank you, we would be glad to. And again, we're just committed to, you know, what we were talking earlier, you know, looking for, for grant funding, looking for opportunities. And for me, I'm very glad to be here as the new director, I just started in August, really to open up those lines of communication. It's not like I haven't met you or I don't know you. But really, we just try to emphasize that we are committed to be community partners and to look for funding outside of the traditional means as well, so.
Perfect. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in. With that, I have a resolution to read for consideration. In the matter of a resolution proclaiming May twenty-twenty-five is Older Americans Month. Whereas May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor Sauter County older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society. And whereas through their wealth of life experiences and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas Sauter County must ensure that older Americans have the resources and support needed to stay involved in their communities, reflecting our commitment to inclusivity and connectedness. And whereas community benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Sauter County Commissioners, Sauter County, Ohio, do proclaim May twenty-twenty-five to be Older Americans Month. We call upon all residents to join us in recognizing the contributions of our older citizens and promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults. Any comments or questions? With that, I'll entertain a motion for the resolution.
Motion to adopt.
And I will second.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Powell.
Aye. We have, we can come up front, because I know you guys have been doing your rounds to all the counties. So we can do a picture.
Our final two, we're trying, we're saying best for last.
Best for last.
I like that.
Hey, Bill Shrope, quote that, would you? Best for last, thank you.
Already there.
If that's not on the radio, it'll be a set. So who's, who do you want to mess up for? Come on up, come on up. Absolutely, if you all are serving our accomplishments.
Come on here.
Yeah.
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 Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, two, three.
Say puppies. Thank you.
Hold on, wait. One, two, three. Okay.
I'm just smiling at the idea that everybody's looking at the back of your head and basically.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to keep my head off of each other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You all are welcome to stay.
Yeah.
You all are welcome to stay if you're, if you don't have anything better to do.
Well, we actually have another consideration that does impact our older Americans.
Well, we actually have another consideration that does impact our older Americans further in our, further in our meeting.
That's right.
All right.
In the matter of notice to bidders for county-wide paving regarding the engineer.
Any comments or questions on item ten? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution authorizing Sauter County Children's Services to join nonprofit Safe Opportunity Foster Alliance, SOFA, and appointment of authorized representatives regarding JFS.
All right, so this, this next project is very exciting. Tim Moore Morton has been working very hard with eight other public children. I want to be very clear. We are talking about these agencies that take children in that are charging per bed. You know, they might start charging five hundred and fifty dollars a day per bed, and then all of a sudden, we get a phone call and says, hey, we're going to bump it up to seven fifty.
Or twelve hundred.
We saw, we saw a recent one, twelve hundred and fifty.
That's the predatory part.
That is, that is the problem. Now, you know, there's some co-issues happening there that we, we can't get into and why they claim they think they should be charging what they're charging. But I, I can tell you, based on the world I operate in, where we're providing care for the elderly, we're not seeing that sort of payment to provide twenty-four-hour care for our elderly. So it's, it's a broken system that I encourage our legislators to, to continue to look at and figure out a solution. But until that happens, thank you to this group that's willing to pull the agency resources together to figure out a, a solution. And it's a temporary placement, so it's not a long-term care facility, it is a temporary placement to figure out the best next steps. Comments, questions?
Agreed. I just, I just hate it that we have to do something at the local level, the state should be taken care of. I'll leave it at that. We do have a, I, I would, we'll have to move on this, and we have a hard stop at ten for the bid.
Oh, the public hearing?
Yes. So with that, I would, I would make a motion to adopt the resolution.
And the appointment.
And the appointment, yeah.
Perfect. I will second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. Well, no, you're fine. We'll pause our agenda for a second. We do have a CHIP first public hearing, so if we'd like to go ahead and open. Amanda, do you want to handle that part, or are we gonna?
Uh, yeah. I don't think we have to bring it down, but in the manner of, is it, this year twenty five?
Yes, it is.
This year twenty five, CHIP, CBGB public hearing. We're going to open that now.
All right. If you'd like to, please join us. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Scott Hillis. I'm from the Ohio Regional Development Corporation. We are a nonprofit corporation out of Chillicothe, or Chillicothe, Ohio, that has assisted different counties, cities, villages throughout the state in applying for and administering different grants, primarily housing grants. And we have worked on a CHIP grant program here for a number of years now in Sauter County. Sauter County has expressed an interest in applying for the twenty twenty-five CHIP program again, and it intends to partner with the City of Portsmouth for funding from the Ohio Department of Development, Office of Community Enhancements. The objective of this program is to partner with Ohio communities to preserve and improve affordable housing for low and moderate-income persons and strengthen neighborhoods and community collaboration. This provides a direct benefit to both low and moderate-income households. It also, however, provides other benefits to the community as a whole. Number one, if you live in a neighborhood and there is housing that needs to be brought up to code or, or rehabbed, doing so will increase everyone's property values, not just that single property owner. In addition, it provides jobs for contractors and provides money for sales tax, because almost all of the supplies, the lumber, nails typically are bought locally. So it, it makes its way in helping the, the community as a whole through sales tax as well. This year, it has been announced that there's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars available for this program with the partnership that I outlined. They have made some, once again, some changes in the program, nothing real significant this year, but a few small changes. There's still rehabilitation assistance, which is the major type of assistance. The limit has been raised to eighty-five thousand dollars per structure now that can be used to bring the house up to RRS standards. The program started a couple of years ago, doing away with the retained portion of a mortgage. You used to put a mortgage on the house, and fifteen percent of that mortgage would have to be paid back to the program when the homeowner either vacated the residence or sold the residence. Now that is not the case. Now the entire amount is placed in the mortgage, but it decreases by twenty percent every year. So if you stay in your house for five years, you will owe nothing to mortgage receivables. There won't be a fifteen percent repayment. There's also repair assistance, which is the most popular type of activity. It is capped at thirty percent of the grant funding. In a repair assistance, you can only spend thirty thousand dollars per home, which is an increase again, but typically in a repair, you're looking at bringing one or two items in a home up to standard. Might be a roof, might be a furnace and air conditioning system or hot water system, but you're only focusing on one or two items. In a rehab, the reason for the higher limit is everything in that house has to be brought up to code. So it costs a lot more to make sure that each item's brought up to code. There's homeowner assistance activity. This has typically not been applied for by very many communities, and in fact, they made a change this year. It used to be that you would get some assistance in your down payment, and then you would get the eighty-five thousand, or the remainder of the eighty-five thousand dollars to bring that house up to code. They've now broken that off, and they're just offering the down payment assistance. The problem in the past still exists, and I think they've made a worse, to be honest with you, and that is have to be low to moderate income and get a loan. And oftentimes, that's not easy to find a bank willing to give someone that's a low to moderate income money to buy a house. The second thing is now, the house has to be up to code at the time you're buying it. So it either has to be a new home or one that is extremely, been kept up extremely well. You're not going to find many of those that qualify for the program. So I think that they've sort of hurt that, that activity. The final activity is tenant-based rental assistance. It's really and truly the same thing almost as voucher aid program we had. There's actually, you would be allowed to spend up to twelve thousand dollars per unit. The typical reason that these aren't chosen very much anymore is because, one, you have to have Metropolitan Housing run the program. Number two, no money goes into fixing the unit. It's just simply handing out a rent check or a deposit check for, for utilities. A lot of communities like the CHIP program because it's helping build up the housing stock. This does not do so. But those are the activities that can be chosen from. The application is due June twenty-fifth this year. The awards typically are around December first of twenty-five, with the funds then being available sometime around March to April of twenty-six. The program's two years from then, so work completion would be in February of twenty-eight, and the grant ending date would be April thirtieth of twenty-eight. Some people asked questions in the past about, well, what qualifies as low to moderate income? In this community, under this year's guidelines, it just came out in April, if you're one person living in a home, you can make up to forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. If you've got three people in that house, it goes up to sixty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty. If you've got five people, it's seventy-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. So that, that's the type of people that can apply for these and qualify. There is currently the CHIP program for twenty twenty-three that's going on as we speak in this community. It will wrap up next year. It's on target, and it looks like we've had more people apply than there is funding. So there will be waiting lists, and hopefully this will get granted, and those people will be able to take part next time around. There will be a second and final hearing on this, May twenty-ninth at ten AM. So if anyone has any questions, be happy to answer them. If not, I would move to conclude the hearing.
The only thing I'll add, because, you know, I had a constituent point out while this, you know, we do talk about the value of CHIP, and it's very, it helps a lot of people. It's still a finite amount of money. So it's seven hundred and fifty thousand. Even if we're only doing the homeowner, the homeowner repair program up to thirty thousand, that's, that's helping twenty-five folks, twenty-five households. So, you know, should we get this grant funding again? I know the application will open up in January of next year, January, February timeframe. But we do first, we do first come, first served. There's always a line of folks to get applications, and when we get to that, we'll talk more about that. But I still encourage you to go through the process and fill it out, because not everybody qualifies, even though they take an application, so. But it is, you know, there is a finite amount of money, but it does help multiple people in our community, so appreciate your hard work on managing our grant, our CHIP program for us. Anything else?
No, not, not so.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
All right. I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your help. With that, we'll jump back to item twelve.
In the matter of resolution authorizing Darren LeBron, PEPs, Sauter County Engineer, to prepare and submit an application to participate in OVR DC STBG program regarding twenty twenty-six SCI CR one zero point zero zero Gally Pike Safety Improvement Project.
Any comments or questions on item twelve? Entertain a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution authorizing Darren LeBron, PEPs, Sauter County Engineer, to prepare and submit an application to participate in OVR DC STBG program and to execute contracts as required regarding twenty twenty-six federal aid route safety improvements, Gally Pike.
Any comments or questions on item thirteen? Hearing none?
I'd make a motion to adopt.
Second?
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of bid award for SCI CR forty-eight point three six Rocky Fork Bridge Replacement Project regarding Sauter County Engineer.
This is a bid award for the Rocky Fork Bridge Replacement Project. This is awarded to Cooper's Excavating LLC in the amount of one million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventeen cents. Any comments or questions? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second, sorry. I keep forgetting I'm the second.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of bid award for SCI CR one six three zero point zero zero Shear Hollow Road Safety Project regarding Sauter County Engineer.
Once again, another bid award. This is Shear Hollow Road Safety Project awarded to Allen Stone Company, Inc., in the amount of two million, seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Comments, questions? Hearing none?
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of memorandum of understanding between Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and the Sauter County Sheriff regarding Corrections Officers Contract.
Any comments or questions on the Corrections Officer Contract?
Did they go back, I mean, basically, me too, you want to? I'm sorry, I did not look at this.
Uh, no, so essentially what they did, they, no additional increases in twenty-six, two percent in twenty-five.
Same as.
So it's what the Fact Finder found. So we did go with the Fact Finder through the labor contract through the sheriff's office. Their recommendations was a two percent wage increase in twenty-five with no additional increase in wages twenty-six. The agreement's in place until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Okay. I just wanted to just check.
It's the Fact Finder's recommendation.
That, it dawned on me while we were sitting here. Okay, very good. I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of memorandum of understanding between Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council, Inc., and the Sauter County Sheriff regarding deputies, dispatchers, cooks, and law enforcement sergeants contract.
Once again, this is the same recommendation from the Fact Finder. Comments, questions? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of contract amendment for Title twenty services provided by CAO regarding Mills on Wheels.
All right. Mills on Wheels, we, we have Angie Davis here with Community Action. Just let us know, we currently have in this county eighty-plus people on the waitlist for Mills on Wheels. It's eighty seniors on the waitlist. This, this consideration is Title ten services provided by Community Action for homebound seniors receiving home-delivered meals, what we call Mills on Wheels. The request is to increase this amount by twenty-five thousand dollars due to an increase in the number of the requested home-delivered meals for seniors and the increase in raw food costs. The current value of the contract is a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Now, this amendment would increase the contract to a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars effective July one through June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Davis? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Powell?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution congratulating Dorothy Taylor on her fiftieth anniversary.
Dorothy Taylor has been with the juvenile? Juvenile court system? Juvenile court system for fifty years. I know they had a party for her.
Probate.
Probate? I know they had a party for her yesterday. Mr. Davis, I believe you, you attended?
I did, I did.
If you'd like to share?
Yeah, it was great. Dorothy has served in multiple capacities in probate court for fifty years. I won't tell you how old she is. She's not retired. She's not retired. It was basically, let's give roses, you know. A lot of times, we don't give roses until after people are gone. And, and, and this is the opportunity, and Judge Bennett wanted to do that, and everyone wanted to give her some roses while, you know, while she's here. And she was very humbled by all of it, of course, but there was a big crowd that showed up. And we did a resolution honoring her that we're voting on today. Anyways, we're doing it today, but we did it yesterday, so there.
I feel good about it.
Yeah, I feel good about it. I'm okay. Somebody wants to say something, they can. Anyways, we, we, we did, it was very nice. She has served four judges during her tenure now and magistrates all along, you know. And it's amazing, and she is the go-to girl down there. If anybody's got a question, especially historical questions, they will go to her and say, hey, what, what, what did we do when this happened? And she'll have the answer. So it was, it was a really neat session. And, and I, I will just say congratulations to Dorothy for fifty years serving the people of Sieda County. And she's also very busy in her private life. She's very busy with her church community, and she does a lot of volunteerism. And she has no intention of slowing down, none. And I, kudos to her, keep on going. She said she feels good, she says, just keep on going. So, and, so everybody was like, oh, congratulations, you're retiring. She goes, I'm not retiring. She wanted it to be known, you know. So, so yeah, congratulations to her.
Thank you for that, and, and, you know, it's awesome to see fifty years of public service. And we're reminded daily that we are surrounded by incredible public servants. So Dorothy, thank you so much for your continued service and many more years. It sounds like they can't afford to lose you, as you're the go-to person, so keep, keep it up. With that, we'll entertain an official motion.
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Powell.
Hi. We do have an executive session to consider. Prior to jumping into that, I will open up to any questions. Item is on agenda. Yes, sir, Mr. Bill Shoeb.
Hi, guys, thank you. Just a question, I had one, it was on item eight, and it regards the Oddfellows Building and the repairs and everything. Is there anybody currently occupying the Oddfellows Building?
So OSU Extension, we did an extensive build-out for them. They provide a lot of services on the, I guess, south part of the building. And then we do have our Office Manager for Economic Development still in that space as well. SOPA is also leasing space for when they have their meetings. So they're utilizing that space as well. Ideally, we get the roof fixed, and then we're able to start focusing on the additional floors, ideally.
We have A D A issues.
Good, good to have plans.
It's good, it's good, yeah.
Building with narrow staircase, yeah.
Well, a narrow staircase, but also we have to have egress too. There's, there's issues. So what has been kind of visualized, and again, this is pie in the sky stuff, and stuff that there is no current funding for.
Correct.
That we have applied for, but it's one step at a time. We gotta, we gotta be a hundred percent high and dry. And by the way, this whole roof issue just kind of got thrown onto us when we had that derecho and a portion of the south side was ripped off in that storm. It exposed issues, called a blessing or a curse, one way or another, but it, it is what it is. But the other issue is accessibility. And being a government facility, we have to have A D A access to the second and third floor if we were to open those up for occupancy, which is the goal. So kind of what we're looking at right now, and those in the room probably know what I'm talking about, is something similar to what Director Murres, Sandy Murres, did at, at E S C as far as the, the elevator shaft, but also stairwell up the side of the Daymar, we call it the Daymar Building. But it's something like that. Because it's a national historic building, to change the inside or the structure of the building could be a real issue for somebody. And, and we have to work around that issue, right? So that's kind of what we're looking at. We would love to open it up, you know, if everybody knows there's a tall ceiling ballroom on the third floor that is just incredible. But we can't do it right now. So it's good to have plans, visions, dreams.
Re-verse.
We'll get there, we'll get there, we'll get there. But the second floor would be awesome for occupancy once we get to the A D A getting it occupied, yeah.
And as a kind of a follow-up to that question, you mentioned that the Office Manager for Economic Development has a space in there.
Yep.
Has there been any kind of timeframe set on what's going to happen with Economic Development Office here, you know, under the ages of Sieda County? And, and kind of, if there's not anybody there right now, what are they doing?
Yeah, so we're utilizing that person, and she's helping with bills, she's helping with other commissioner duties. I mean, ultimately falls under our scope of practice, so kind of working within the, the different needs of the office, but still occupying space over there. In terms of a timeframe, Bill, we don't have one. I know I've been having multiple conversations, Commissioner Davis, I'm sure you've been having multiple conversations as well. I believe you were present when J P Naseef was in town a couple of weeks ago. I'm encouraged of how many organizations are wanting to help in, at local organizations, not just regional, but local organizations that want to come back to the table and to be involved in the economic development efforts of the county, so.
Yeah, Mr. Naseef seemed to be pretty aggressive about putting some help and everything.
Yep.
Right there. And just, I just wanted to comment, just say thank you for keeping the community informed about, in a tasteful manner, what's going on with Commissioner Coleman at this time. And we at the station and the paper will certainly forward the information accurately as well as your concern and prayers for our.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, item on agenda, off agenda, nothing? All right, with that, we will consider.
Just going to throw out a couple things?
Oh, yeah, we have, sorry.
Real quick, I want to thank the citizens of Sieda County for supporting the issue two, OP W C measure that will assure infrastructure dollars for our county as well as the entire state of Ohio. It was very important for everybody to understand that it wasn't a tax increase. It is funded by bonds that the state of Ohio takes out and pays over a period of time. If we're old enough to remember, we actually do this every ten years. Problem is, we don't remember. Every ten years is not that often. But just recently, of course, we had the thousand, thousand-foot slip on Fort Hill. It's going to cost millions and millions of dollars to fix. That is something that would not be in an engineer's budget. We were able to apply, they were able to apply, Darren's office was, Engineer LeBron's office was able to apply for and get. So they're going to be able to get that replaced. There was another slip, it slips my mind, the pun intended, where that was. But we had another major slip in the county, and OP W C's covering that too. So these are, these are dollars that are critical. And gosh, I would love to see the list of awarded grants for Sieda County that, I mean, I know over the years, we've approved many grants through OP W C, Public Works Commission. So this is very important dollars that we can have. And a lot of people don't realize they drive over those dollars every day. Those are essential infrastructure dollars that are being spent in our county, millions, 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 millions of dollars. So thank you, Sieda County, for doing that. Also, the Mark's Tower erection was backed up, I mentioned it. It's, it's all about weather, getting the crane up there. But of course, we are installing a three-hundred-and-ten-foot tower on top of Fort Hill. So getting the crane, you can only imagine the size of this crane. We have to have really solid ground to do that work, so it's been backed up just another week, waiting for things to dry out. And, and then I will bring up one more thing, and I think it's, it's something we would need to discuss between ourselves. But I think with the conclusion of the sheriff's contracts, and there was, and there reason things were held up a little bit. We, you know, of course, we were still dealing with the, the issue with the corrections side of things. But I would like to seriously look at non-bargaining unit increases on a me-too level for non-bargaining. I know some departments have already done so within, prayerfully, within the scope of their budgets. But I think that we need to give that access and approve the same for non-bargaining across the board for those who have not received an increase. And it's just something we need to.
No, I think the auditor's office is going to need to provide to us what offices have already taken action.
I agree.
Versus which offices have not, based on our request. And then we can true, know what the true budget impact is.
I, I agree.
At that point, that's the, that's the unknown.
I, I, I agree. I just, I think, you know, we talked about this, and, and, and I think it's, it's fair. It's only fair to do that. But I totally one-hundred percent agree with you that we have to know what the bottom line is. We, we got an initial figure, but what we didn't get was the people who went ahead and did it. And that was not anticipated and not recommended, was not recommended to do that. But until we knew, typically, we make decisions a little bit later, but we're there now. So anyways, just wanted to bring it up, sir.
Appreciate that.
Opportunity, and that's it for me.
I, I don't have much to share. I know we mentioned Kathy earlier in our prayers, but I had the opportunity to spend time with the family yesterday at Grant. The big takeaway for me, and I don't want to go too much into her condition, is that they were so appreciative of the outpouring of, of support, the outpouring of prayers, the amount of people reaching out. I was there while the surgeon came out and kind of shared with the family. And then, once again, I'm not going into that, it's up to them to share those things. But continue to pray for Kathy and her family and the medical team. That's all I got. With that, we do have executive session that we need to consider. So I'll entertain a motion to enter to executive session to discuss the discipline dismissal of a county employee according to O R C one-two-one point two-two G one and three.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Davis. Mr. Powell.
Hi. I would imagine this will be back relatively quick.
Katie's done a good job.
Katie's doing a great job, Katie.
She's done a good job already.
Still a couple items, don't screw up.
Little bit, you've got this much more than you did.
Yep, so we'll be. Yep, so we'll be.